My pleasure. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, and welcome to the February 18th County Commission meeting. Remind you to silence your cell phones. The meeting documents are at the end of the counter in the black folder, and if you need a listening device, Robert is in the front row, and he can help you with that.
Routine business. Item one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the agenda. Is there any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item two is to approve the county commission minutes of February 11th, 2014.
Move the minutes.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any comments, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of $668,756.33.
Pay the bills.
Second the bills.
Motion and a second. Any comments? Commissioner Barth?
I have to say, uh, foods, laptops, and computers for about $70,000.
I have a motion and a second on the table for $668,756.33. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item four are reports. The following three reports have been received and are placed on file in the auditor's office. A, the South Dakota Department of Veterans Affairs 2013 Annual Report. B, the Register of Deeds Official Statement of Fees Collected During January 2014. And C, the Auditor's Account with the County Treasurer as of January 31st, 2014. Item five is personnel. A is a motion to approve the personnel actions.
Good morning, Jen.
Good morning, Jen Otis from Human Resources. If you have any questions on the routine personnel actions, I'm happy to answer them for you.
Any questions or comments for Jen?
I'll move routine action.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
There are no applications for abatement today. The next item, items are notice and requests. Item A is to authorize the county auditor to publish a notice of hearing to consider applications to transfer the retail on-sale liquor license held by DRG Incorporated, the Dell's Rocky Run Golf Course, to Debbie Broberg Norbees Incorporated. The legal description of the licensed premises is tracks two, Madsen Tracks of Outlaw A, except the east 400 feet, northwest quarter, southwest quarter, Section 8 Township 104 North, Range 49 West, 47364 Golf View Drive in Dell Rapids.
I'll make that motion to publish.
I have a motion and a second to authorize the county to publish notice of hearing. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item B is to authorize the county auditor to publish a notice to bidders for one signed crane truck body with trade-in for the Minnehaha County Highway Department.
DJ sign is away.
Good morning. Commissioner, this is DJ Booth, the Highway Superintendent. Sorry for the delay there. Uh, what we're looking at doing here is, is replacing the body of one of our, our pickup trucks. Uh, right now, we have a utility box on it that would be similar to what you might see a plumber or something driving around town, like a frisbee truck, plumber truck. Uh, it's got a, a small utility box on it, and, uh, we've been using that. It's a reused, um, truck body that we've been, uh, using. It was placed on a 2013 truck that we bought a few years ago, and, uh, the body that we wished to purchase, uh, is a bigger version of that, and then it has a, a small crane on the side of it that's, that we hope to be able to pick up our, our hammering unit, basically a big jackhammer that hauls pounds signs for, uh, for installing signs on the ditch right of way. And, uh, that's gonna be a big safety, uh, improvement for our department. Right now, um, it's kinda scary to watch our guys install signs, and so I, I moved this up in our, our purchasing plan when I realized exactly what it was for and, and the improvements that will be made. Um, the existing, uh, truck body will be traded in. It's not in very good shape, but, uh, we don't have any use for it, and so, uh, we'll be requesting to trade that in with a proposal form, and then this will be to, uh, build and install a new truck body on the existing, uh, truck chassis that we have. Uh, cost estimate that we received from a vendor that, uh, we worked with, uh, is about $49,000, and so, uh, we would expect the bids, the bids to come in about that, maybe a little bit lower when it's competitively bid. So, do you have any questions? I can answer them now.
Any questions for DJ? DJ, the, um, contract we have with the state to replace signage, is the state gonna install those signs, or is that our responsibility to change all those signs?
A contractor will install the signs. It will be bid, uh, uh, very similar to when we do a construction project. It will be bid through the state, and they'll hire a contractor to come and replace the signage.
What signage do you think we're gonna be replacing in the next two years?
Our own signs.
So that's different than what the state is replacing?
No, the state will be replacing all the signs, and then we have a sign crew, uh, that goes and replaces signs that get knocked down almost on a, uh, I won't say daily, but maybe two or three times a week, uh, we have to go out and replace signs, uh, that get knocked down from accidents or, or whatever it happens to be. And then on our bridges, a lot of times, there's, there's marker signs on the side that get knocked over from equipment. And so after the, the state's replacement project, a lot of our work will just be replacing signs that get knocked over and things. Right now, we actively go out and replace old, uh, bad signage. And so our signing program after the, uh, the sign project that the state has, uh, will be more monitoring our sign system rather than replacing old stuff.
Okay. Any other questions for DJ? Is there a motion?
A motion to publish.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to authorize the county to, um, publish notice for a, one signed crane truck body. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Item C is to authorize the county auditor to publish a notice to bidders for micro-surfacing project on 6.5 miles of Minnehaha County Highway 121 and 4.23 miles on Minnehaha County Highway 138. DJ Booth.
Uh, good morning again, Commissioners. Uh, last year, we did our first micro-surfacing project, a couple miles on, on West Maple Street or Highway 1, County Highway 140, and it was a big success, and we hope to do a lot more, uh, in the coming years. Uh, this year, we're increasing our, our project to almost 11 miles, just over 10 and a half miles, and, uh, we estimate that the cost will be about $710,000. Uh, we did, uh, have this packaged, uh, together with the city of Sioux Falls and a couple other smaller municipalities as one large bid package, and the way that, uh, we found out that it had been advertised, uh, didn't meet our own, uh, purchasing policy, and so we pulled out of that, uh, that project, and we're gonna be bidding this separately. And the way that we have the schedule, uh, set up and the way that the addendum of this, the municipality's bid package was sent out, uh, they are notifying their contractor that we have our own project as a separate project, and so we hope to have the same contractors still work on both projects, and, and so we will still realize some of those, uh, benefits of having, uh, larger quantities, uh, in one area, because these contractors are regional contractors, they're not, uh, local contractors that perform micro-surfacing. So we're requesting to, uh, begin to advertise beginning Monday, March, or February 24th.
Any more questions for DJ? I'd be looking for a motion.
Motion to approve, or the publishing.
A motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to authorize the county to publish notice of bidders for the micro-surfacing project. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, DJ.
All right, thank you.
And item D is the East Dakota Water Development District Notice of Meeting at 9:00 AM Thursday, February 20th, 2014, at their office at 132B Airport Avenue in Brookings, South Dakota. There are no planning and zoning notices today. The next item is petition for compromise of lien. John Pecas.
Thank you, Cindy. This is on DPNO number 20803 in the amount of $2,750.64. The auditor's office received a request for a compromise of lien from the applicant. Uh, there is, uh, currently no real estate involved with this particular transaction. Nevertheless, uh, there is a request to go ahead and to clear up some, some debt, which the applicant is attempting to do. Uh, the, uh, request, if approved, would require the applicant to make a, uh, a payment, I believe, of, uh, $700 or 50.9% of the lien balance. Uh, now, uh, before we get to the ultimate lien balance, we have to look at some of the background and history here. Uh, although there is no real estate involved with this particular transaction, uh, there is a variety of debt that is incurred primarily through rent assistance, medical assistance, and of course, public defender and public advocate, court-appointed attorney fees. Uh, the, uh, current applicant and his ex-wife were actually married, uh, back in 1987. They divorced in 1999. Uh, at that time, the balance was $3,123.85 since the time of the divorce. The applicant has been responsible for more, uh, money that has been obligated to the county in the amount of $639.80 primarily for legal fees, which of course, got added to the amount. Uh, there have been partial payments totaling $1,013.1. Uh, the applicant is also responsible for a net reduction in the lien balance of $373.21 since the time of the divorce. All the payments were verified by the auditor's office. Uh, if we choose to accept the applicant's request for the $700 payment, he would, uh, request that, uh, the net payment of $373.21, which had been paid ultimately, uh, by him, uh, would be credited. So, that would have been actually, uh, an indication that he would have paid close to 55% of the balance since the time of divorce. Uh, unfortunately, this gets somewhat convoluted. However, uh, he is currently employed. Uh, he and his current wife have, uh, combined income of approximately $40,000 a year. He has assets of $9,700 consisting primarily of a vehicle, household goods. He has debts of $3,500, and of course, uh, he has rent and some child support payments. Uh, I'll tell you what, I went through this, and I actual read the stipulation and agreement. I had a conversation with the state's attorney's office prior to the meeting, and I do have some concerns. When I went through, not only is there a divorce decree from 1999, but in that divorce decree, it incorporates the stipulation and agreement, and in that stipulation and agreement, both parties actually agreed to assume the debts that they acquired during the course of the marriage. So, uh, unfortunately, when I look at this and the way they're trying to split out the assets, there seems to be a disproportionate amount of credit that he's taking, uh, vis-à-vis his ex-wife. She gets left holding the bag, so I'm not going to make a motion this morning until we get a more accurate, uh, statement or request, uh, with the consideration of the stipulation and agreement.
Any questions for Commissioner Pecas? Commissioner Barth?
Um, John, so, in splitting up the, the lien, you think that it's, it's, uh, shuffling it more towards, uh, her paying more?
Yes.
Because?
Because, uh, the fact that in 1999, they agreed to assume the debts that they were obligated for at the time of the divorce. Since then, he's incurred more services, but yeah, when he comes forward, he's saying split it by half. Well, it could be pennies, but, you know, it, it isn't, but, uh, unfortunately, this is what I determined, uh, when I reviewed this this last weekend. I didn't have a conversation with the state's attorney's office till this morning. Just hold up your sheet of paper showing that the word. He didn't tell me he did this, but he actually put pen to paper. I didn't put pen to paper, he actually did, so.
Masked engineer.
Exactly. So, I, I didn't have a conversation with him, but this is, you know, there were some things that jumped out at us, and we were both of the same mindset. I, I didn't quantify it, he did, um, but, uh, regardless, there's gonna have to be more of a, uh, candor with this, uh, commission by the applicant before I'd consider it.
If, I just may add something quickly. Uh, not only does the stipulation say what Commissioner Pecas said, but it's specifically in the stipulation as well, they backdate single responsibility for debts to the date of separation, which in this case was five years before the, the, the document was ultimately signed, and there's also additional significant, uh, costs racked up by the applicant during that '94 to '99 period. So, I think that even skews it more that way, so.
Any other questions for Commissioner Pecas? Commissioner Barth?
This is more of a comment, I guess. I would hope that the applicant would keep making payments and, uh, bring us another offer.
Well said.
Any other questions or comments? Is there any motion? Is there a motion?
Motion to deny.
I have a motion to deny and a second. I have a motion to deny and a second. Other comments or questions? All those in favor of denying the compromise of lien?
Madam Chair. I guess, uh, my question was, is the applicant in the audience?
Oh, sorry, is the applicant in the audience? Okay, no, nobody to speak to it. So I have a motion and a second to deny the application for compromise of lien. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
The next item is an opportunity for public comment.
This is the time when the public can come forward and speak on any matter that they would like to that is not already on the agenda. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the commission or to the public? Seeing no one, we will move on.
Regular business. Item number 10 is consider a recommendation from the Sulan Heritage Museum Board of Directors for Realtor Services for the sale of Minnehaha County-owned bare land parcel. This was deferred from February 11th. Pam Hoskins.
Good morning.
Bill.
Bill Hoskins, Director, Sulan Heritage Museums. Uh, this, uh, wow, quickly, uh, we talked about this last week. This comes from, from a RFP to sell, uh, 19.9 acres of land, um, that was given to the county specifically to help raise funds for the construction of a storage facility for the museum's collection. Uh, we received two good proposals, uh, one from Bender, uh, Commercial Realty, and one from Nelson, I think it's property consultants. Uh, the museum board, each, each met all of the requirements of the P, uh, the, uh, RFP. Uh, they both have proposed contracts which are, are in your packets. Um, I think Nelson was proposing a contract through October of 2014. I think, uh, Michael's Bender's contract proposal is through January of 2015. Um, the, the chief difference, well, there were two differences. Uh, Mr. Bender's has a graduated price scale, it could be five to six percent depending on circumstances. Nelson's recommend, or, uh, proposal is a six percent, uh, brokerage fee. Um, when the museum board looked at these, they looked at them from a perspective of, uh, they're both good proposals, uh, splitting hairs. They looked at, uh, the effort that had been put into preparing the proposal by Mr. Nelson. I think you have, and, and their recommendation was based on that. You have the opportunity, it is a recommendation from a advisory board, certainly, uh, Mr. Bender's firm is an excellent firm. We'd have no problem going with them as well. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them, although Tom Simmons is here, uh, representing Ron Nelson, and Michael Bender is here as well, and they're more than willing to answer any questions you might have.
I think I'll start with, we ended the last meeting with, um, a motion to accept the proposal of Bender Commercial Real Estate Services that was tied two to two, and that's what the deferral was on. Is there any comments or questions from the commission, or is there a new motion, or, Commissioner?
Well, I, I agree that they're both very reputable, uh, realtors in this community, but I would like to have this, make a substitute motion to send this back to the, uh, museum board, and I would like some of the following questions asked and answered if we could. Is the rea, and maybe I need to get a second first, I'm not sure.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to defer back, or refer back to the museum board.
I don't need it republished, so we don't need to go back through that, but I would like answers to the following questions about recent sales in the area that they participated in, and I'm talking about the area of the, the location of the property, uh, the relationships with the current owners in that area, and if they've had any sales to those owners, what their suggested price listing would be versus what they think that the sale price might be, and then also like, um, the conversation about, uh, frankly, any of the sales that they've had listed in their own firm and what the listing price was versus what the sale price was. And I think those are all important questions that need to be answered before the, the process is completed, because this isn't about speed of sale, this is about, frankly, the best price, and Mr. Bender's fees are a little less, but if, it's more about the sale price than it is about what the commission price is. So that's my reason for, uh, recommending this at this point. Will it delay it a little bit, potentially, but, but in the very end, it's the best deal that the county can get, which is the most important, and frankly, the price could make a big difference in our budgeting process for other things like the detox center and some of those other, uh, programs that we're gonna have to fund on a very tight budget, and I think we need answers to these other questions.
Commissioner Barth?
Um, well, I'm not as supportive of that, uh, Commissioner Benega. I think that, um, each of these, um, proposals met all of the criteria that we have, that we had, and that, uh, these additional factors, you know, in effect, are additional criteria, uh, which we didn't, uh, suggest at the time, and everybody wants to get the very best price, and everybody wants to make a deal as quickly as possible. Uh, so, I think that, uh, you know, rather than play, uh, back and forth, uh, patty cake with this, I think we should go ahead and, and make the decision, uh, and certainly, it seems a little bit like we're making, uh, telling the museum board, uh, what our choice is, and they, they need to come to us with what our choice is, as opposed to us making our own choice. I think we have the latitude to go ahead and, uh, make that decision today, and I would favor making that decision today. Um, again, I think that it's perfectly reasonable not to, but I think it's perfectly reasonable to make that decision.
Commissioner Pecas?
Well, uh, I agree with, uh, what Gerald, uh, basically indicated. I respect Jeff's position, but, uh, I had, I stated last week my concerns, they haven't been alleviated. Um, I don't think that it would, basically undermine the process to go ahead and send it back to the museum board. Uh, the fact remains that in the RFP, we asked for interviews to be done, which were optional, they weren't done, uh, and also, we never put in the RFP that time was of the essence yet. That's really what the museum board essentially considered primarily their, uh, part of their decision-making process, so, uh, I have a concern with that. So I want to make sure that there's clarity in the process with what was done at the museum level, and then take it up to the commission. Whatever I said, obviously, Mr. Hoskins would like to elaborate or clarify.
Yeah, if I might. Uh, just a reminder of some of the background. Through the budget process last year, uh, we ultimately came to an agreement with the city, um, to divide up how we would fund this, and, uh, I believe those funds are in the city's budget for 2014. Uh, I think the museum board came from the perspective of, we want to get this project started in 2014. That's, that's really their point, and we don't want any other, well, we don't want potential issues to come up with that funding.
Comments, Commissioner Benega?
Well, I won't make any comments about the patty cake, because that patty cake is a million square feet at 50 cents a square feet, that's a half a million dollars worth of the patty cake. So, the issue is, and let me respond to your suggestions, is that even if it's been appropriated in 2014, it can be carried forward to 2015 if it needs to. There's a difference between the square footage price in that area between $4 a square foot and $2.50 a square foot. That hundred, a buck fifty times a million square feet is a lot of money for this particular project, and frankly, if, if it sells for the higher price, uh, the county has other options, plenty of other options, to use that million and a half dollars to do other things with rather than being in a hurry to get this thing sold. I understand this has been a four-year process, but, to be very blunt, if it's going to take, uh, an extra six months to get this done, and if we can generate another million and a half dollars out of the project because we do it the right way, and I'm, both companies would do it the right way. That's not the issue. I think that in the process, there was some fuzziness, frankly, to that conversation, and I think we need to clarify and come back and have that done correctly.
If I could clarify one thing. It, it's 876,000 square feet.
I'm doing it in my head.
Not a million, but, uh, just wanted to make sure that's in record. Um, I, I, I understand where you're coming from. Uh, in, in September, the resolution from the board about selling this, the board has gone through, uh, the resolution recommends to the commission that the listing price be at least $2.50 a square foot, which is, uh, basis, and they also recommend that it not be short sold below a point, uh, because if it did, we wouldn't be able to make money at the deal. And, so, both realtors, they were not asked to do a market analysis as part of their proposal. Uh, Ron Nelson did, went above and beyond and did some of that, just so that we have that.
Commissioner Benega?
And, Bill, I understand that, and I understand the written proposals, and, and frankly, a market analysis is important, because I don't think anybody up here is a Realtor.
I agree.
And the issue is, is, one of them comes back and tells me, if I went to a Realtor, which I did in our, in an own, our own property sale, and asked them for a suggested price, and they came back with a difference, there's an obvious reason to make a suggestion, uh, on which one you're gonna take. And again, the, the economics of the deal, uh, frankly, have dictated that we take a little more control of this, frankly.
Christian?
I just got a quick comment about, I, I hear some concerns here about whether we think sending it back with these particular questions are, is outside the RFP, and I'm just gonna give you a quick point to some of the RFP that, that specifies relevant experience and also a plan of operation, and as we mentioned, the optional interview process. I believe the questions that, uh, Commissioner Benega has brought forward are within the bounds of what is generally in the RFP, so if there are any concerns about that, I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, any other comments?
Again, I think I said it, but I want to make sure. I do not want to republish this, I just want answers to those questions.
I, I want to say, as, as far as their recommendation, that they wanted a minimum $2.50. I think we very strongly said in our building meeting when that was brought to us, that we thought it was valued, the value could be far higher than $2.50, and whether it's a million acres or 800, or a million square feet or 800 square feet, we need the best dollar to go forward with our other projects, and I think that really is the commission's biggest concern. Um, with that, I have a motion and a second to send this back to the museum board, and see if I have these, yep, excuse me. Good morning, Rex.
Hi, how are you? I'm Rex Rolfe, um, Sioux Falls City Council. We, we passed this agreement already with you to, uh, to make this sale as part of the million three that we're contributing to the, um, to the building as it goes up. I don't remember anything about there being any excess funds available for the county to dibby up on this after we're, uh, after we're done with the sale.
There's not.
And I don't think there was anything in the agreement. However, there may have been, had we known that $2.50 was what we, and we probably, it's probably our fault for not digging into it more, uh, knowing that, uh, you know, $2.50 was the bare minimum, and $4 was more, more, uh, reasonable figure for that, 'cause you're looking at, um, you know, uh, over a million dollars. And, uh, in that situation, now can I ask, is there a place that that's gonna go specifically designed for this building?
Yeah, Bill can speak to it, but I believe what we do is, that money will take off your amount and our amount, and any excess would go back to the museum, so if it sells for more.
Back to the museum.
Well, to their.
No, no, goes back to the project.
To the project. To the project.
So if they sell it, they sell it for $4 million.
A bigger building, we put this, with better roof and that kind of thing?
Well, well, no, no. Yeah.
Okay, clarify. In, in the agreement from November, the, the formula that was put together was that whatever the value, the, the money realized from the land sale would, would go first towards the cost of construction. So if it raises more than 1.3 million, and I'm just pulling a number, if it, if it was $2 million and the cost of the building then was 3.9, you'd take the 2 million off the top and then the city and county splitting the remainder.
Yeah.
It, it is in that agreement that the city's portion will not exceed 1.3 million. And the intent of the agreement was to make sure that it was equitable for county and city governments.
Yeah.
Madam Chair?
Do you remember that for us?
Yeah.
Commissioner Barth?
Sort of a point of personal privilege for a minute. Over the weekend, I was at a veterans event at the Washington Pavilion and was honored to share the room with Councilman Rolfing and his family. And it was a really great event and it was great to see him there. He personally didn't get as much recognition as I did unfortunately, but thank you, sir.
I have a motion and a second on the table to refer back to the museum with three points on it. I don't know if those are part of the motion.
Yes.
Okay, part of the motion and see if I have these right. A recent sales in the area, relationship of those current property owners to the area?
Relationship to the current property owners to the realtors if they've done business with them in the past.
The list, listing price and the listing price versus sale price.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's the motion?
Yep. I'm going to ask for a roll call vote.
Okay. Commissioner, Commissioner Pecos?
Yes.
Benega?
Yes.
Barth?
No.
Heiburger?
Yes. So it refers back to the museum board. Although it always, I guess the motion passes you, um, three to two.
Three to one, three to one.
Three to one, sorry.
Okay, the next item, item 11 is consider a motion to authorize-
Was it a motion to substitute?
Are we ready?
Wasn't it a motion to substitute?
Yes.
Motion was a substitute.
So now we need to take the vote.
Okay. Now we need to have a, a vote on the original motion.
Yes.
Which was to accept the proposal from Bender Realtors.
No, we're gonna, sorry, we're, we're gonna vote actually on the motion itself as being the primary motion in front of you now. We were just voting on whether to substitute this one for the Bender one.
So same motion, now it's the real motion.
Pecos?
Yes.
Benega?
Yes.
Barth?
No.
Heiburger?
Yes.
Now it passes three to one. We can move on. Did you have something to say, Commissioner?
Well, only based on what I heard, in fact, Councilor Rolfing talk about, about the proceeds. And I'm just hoping, if you have any questions, I have a copy of the agreement on how those proceeds are to be used for construction according to the agreement, if you have any questions regarding that, so.
Any questions?
I think Bill was very clear in his explanation.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
Thank you. Now we will move on.
Okay, item 11, consider a motion to authorize a transfer in the amount of 196,179 dollars from the general fund to the emergency management fund in accordance with the FY 2014 budget. Darlene Johnson.
Good morning, Darlene Johnson from the auditor's office. We are requesting that you authorize a transfer of 196,179 dollars from the general fund to the emergency management fund. This is a transfer that we, that occurs every year. That amount is what is in the 2014 budget that was approved, but we do need specific authorization for the transfer.
Okay. Any questions for Darlene?
Motion to approve, second?
A motion and a second to approve the authorization of the transfer of the amount of 1,960 dollar, what, 196,000 dollars, 197, I think I said that wrong still, dollars, to the general fund for the emergency management fund. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Actually, it's from the general fund to emergency management fund.
Thank you.
Item 12 is consider a motion to authorize the chairman to sign an agreement between Minnehaha County and the city of Sioux Falls for election services. Bob Litz.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Bob Litz from the auditor's office. Today, I'm requesting that the commission formally authorize the chairperson to sign the recent changes to our election agreement. There are some language housekeeping updates deemed necessary because of election procedural changes. County will, will also now have the ability to recoup time that the auditor's office personnel spent on the elections, other than the ones mandated by statute. If passed today, the city council will need to do the same thing at the next possible meeting. Today, we have the pleasure of having Lori Hogsted present to answer any questions or comments that anyone has. And I was going to note that Rex Rolfing is also here. He's introduced himself, so that removes that responsibility from me. But the auditor's office is proud to be in partnership with the city on their election process and we look forward to a mutually beneficial relationship in the years to come. And I didn't know if Lori wanted to come up and have a few comments or if anybody had some questions for Lori.
Good morning, Lori. If you could just identify yourself.
Good morning. Lori Hogsted, city clerk with the city of Sioux Falls. It's, it's great to be able to work with Auditor Litz on this election agreement. We went through it and as he mentioned, one of the items that he really felt was important to add to the agreement and, and I certainly agreed and our counselors agreed, was in section six, the day of the election, that those hours, the day of the election for us, which is April 8th, would be charged to the city because obviously those persons working that would not be able to do their normal duties. And that was a very, very reasonable expectation that we are willing to put into the agreement. As Bob mentioned, we've, we've been working greatly together, collaborating, working on whether it's the vote centers that we've agreed to use or the election workers. In fact, we're putting a list of workers together right now that, once we get done, we're asking them if they're not willing to work for the city, if they still wish to work for the county. And we're going to share all that information with Auditor Litz when completed. So we look forward to continuing to collaborate with the county auditor.
Any questions for Lori or Bob?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve the authorization of the chairman to sign the agreement between Minnehaha County and the city of Sioux Falls for election services. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thanks Lori for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 13 is a briefing on Minnehaha County 4-H program activities and outreach efforts for their coming here. Charles Martinell.
Good morning, Charles.
Good morning. My name is Chuck Martinell. Just to give you guys a brief update here on our 4-H program. Once again, thank you for funding the 4-H program in the county. We have had some wonderful success in the last few months, we're going to continue to build on that success. One of our big accomplishments in the last couple of months is getting new clubs formed here in Sioux Falls in the metro area that meets a huge need that we are having. Prior to this, a lot of our clubs are rural clubs outside of the community, but now inside of Sioux Falls, the metro area. Here, we've got new clubs and that's going to help us with recruiting and retention of new urban 4-H members. With that kind of recruitment and retention, our 4-H numbers are looking great this year. So far, we're about 20% up in our growth projected from last year. So we're looking at, potentially have about 600 members total this year, which is a big, big jump in numbers from last year, which was about 500. So about 600. My math might be a little bit off this morning, but it served for me, so. One of the reasons for this growth is we're streamlining our membership process, we're making it kind of more beneficial. We were going to more paperless to save money, that and those routes. We've been getting some very positive word of mouth with our partnering programs and with our 4-H clubs. Also with the fair, the Sioux Empire Fair and our program there, we had a ton of feedback from families wanting to join after that. And partnering with our after-school programs, we've gotten quite a few members from that too. So initial strike from working with that. This year, we're focusing on some service projects. Each club's been challenged to do about 1,000 hours worth of community service. That would be about 25,000 to 30,000 hours if our affiliates also complete this community service. That's a lot of community service. We're working with some outside groups to help with that funding. Those groups are providing the, the monetary funds, we're providing the manpower, and we're doing everything from insect habitats for the monarch butterfly to gardening, to recycling programs throughout the county. So it's been very nice, a lot of individuals in the community have stepped up or expressed a lot of interest in helping us with these projects. Personally, for me, outreach, for the outreach program, we are currently engaged with 12 different after-school programs in the county. Each of these programs average about 80 youth. I work in small groups, 10 to 15 kids. I rotate for how many hours I'm there to help bring that 4-H exposure to more kids in our county. Last month, we had over 800 different youth take part in this and we were primarily working with minority, recently immigrated or low-income families to help bring 4-H to families that traditionally do not reach, have that opportunity. Last fall, I did this very similar thing, exact same thing actually. We reached 2,000 more youth in the county this way. So you, as the county's getting more bang for their buck, if I'm going out and bringing 4-H to several individuals and having that impact, being a long-term thing. Some of the feedback we've gotten back from our partnering groups is it's been highly beneficial for the youth, something the youth is looking forward to and thankful that programs like 4-H exist. So it's very good, a very good feedback. A lot of these groups are very happy that the county supports us. Some of the upcoming things that we've got going on, we're currently planning on our 2014 summer programs and achievement days. If anybody's bored August 1st, we're doing judging that day, so feel free to volunteer. If not, I understand. Currently, I'm looking to buy, to partner with six summer programs to bring their weekly programming or bi-weekly programming, depending on my schedule. These will be programs such as the Y with their summer programs to lose themselves to services. I'm really trying to find that need in the community that 4-H can fill, help bring that compassion and learning and that impact this program has. This is a change from the past. In the past, there's only been one program 4-H supported in the summer. I'm going to step it up to six. I'm one person, so hopefully six won't burn me out. Some of the other things we are partnering with, we are working with Ag Day at the Washington Pavilion coming up on March 22nd. We're also working with the Water Festival here, which involves several hundred local youth. We are also partnering with Tri-State Horse Show and we're planning on our own Shaggy Horse Show for the community and the surrounding counties, so. That is a 4-H update. Any questions?
Any questions for Charles?
I do have one. Wasn't this office originally supposed to have one and a half people staffed in it? Are they still working on filling that part-time position or?
Yes, they are. Rachel resigned in December, effective immediately, and they're currently going through the SBSU hiring process.
Okay. And we know that can take a while.
Yes, so you're still stuck with me.
Well, I thank you for all you've done. There have been huge changes in the, in 4-H program in the last two and a half, three years and it makes it, went from a fairly large staff to now one person with a lot going on and even with just one, Charles has increased our attendance and, and outreach and stuff and so we greatly appreciate what you've been doing for us and thank you for taking the time to do an update for us.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Item number 14 is an update and status report of the 89th legislative session on bills that impact Minnehaha County. Robert Wilson.
Good morning, Commissioner Robert Wilson. Got a number of bills that I'm going to run through this morning, update you on. There are a few changes as the session's moving along. Obviously, the biggest one is Senate Bill 111 that would raise the, the maximum amount that property taxes could increase from, from year to year, from 3% or CPI, whichever is less, CPI of 3%, whichever is greater with a cap of four. That one is scheduled for hearing this week and so there hasn't been any change in its status since I talked to you last week. But that is, that's for the 19th, on the 19th, that'll be tomorrow and that's in-
Senate appropriations.
Senate appropriations, thank you.
Are you calling?
And I-
No.
And I don't, I don't know that we've heard a whole lot of feedback from our, the association since, since Mr. McFarland and a number of other folks from the county, including a number of commissioners went up for that, that hearing. But obviously, that will be big when that one, that one comes, comes forward. I jump forward.
Comment on that in just a second. And I don't know if, if any of the rest of you caught that article in the paper. I don't remember if it was on Thursday, Friday or Saturday, but Halwick had brought forward a proposal that they would keep the state at 3% or less in their tax revenue, the same as what the counties are. And the response from the off, from their office, their finance officer or something is that they, basically what we've been saying all along, we can't live under those restraints. And I was going to pull that piece of paper and bring it up here and share it with you if you didn't see it. It was quite an interesting comment because it's exactly what we've been saying as a county and the state says they can't live under those rules. And so I don't know why we should have to live under those rules, but.
As Robert said, the status of that bill is, you know, it's right now below the line on the committee hearings and that, but I expect that Senate appropriations will vote on the bill and it won't be a quote, moved to another committee. They're fast approaching when they've got to get the bills out of the House of origin. And so it's highly, it could be very, very possible that they'll take a vote on that tomorrow. So, you know, I know that emails have gone out and, you know, and I've supplied at the request of some of the committee members some additional material, you know, for their review. But, you know, it's, again, it's, it's a tough bill to sell in this year's environment. So, but if you have an opportunity to send an email to the Senate appropriations folks, then that would be great. But I expect that they're the committee that will deal with this and then they'll deal with it soon.
Can you supply a list of just the names that's on there again to us, to send us an email? Thank you. Okay. You can go on, Robert.
Yeah, there were a number of other bills I wanted to chat about as well, but figured I would start with that one because that one was really the, the one that we're watching with, with the greatest interest. One other that I would bring to you is House Bill 1096. This was one that was deferred earlier in the session and has come back now as an amendment, commonly known as a hog house, which is a full text, text amendment. And this one would make a change that, an act to revise certain provisions regarding the challenging of certain election petitions. And in the case of initiated measures or referendums where the current statute gives five days to review and challenge those petitions, this extends that time period out to 30 days, which is a, probably a substantial amount of time if somebody was looking to, to dig into those. And again, this is very early, but it has been amended, that process, that language is in and appears to be getting started through the process. House Bill 1097 would really, appears to, to change the criteria for valuing ag land and have been watching, watching this and going through this with Mr. Helseth up in our equalization office. And again, this, Kyle said this wouldn't have a real dramatic impact on our valuation here in Minnehaha County, but it, it has a workload impact as it's a number of different criteria and would cause them some, some additional work. That has, that did pass out of House Ag 10 to 2 last week. And so we'll, we'll continue to watch that as it's a, obviously statewide has some big implications, but not a big valuation implication here in Minnehaha County. One that we've talked about the last couple of weeks that the treasurer's office has a big concern about is 1179. And that would have provided for a credit if you sold or transferred a vehicle and there was remaining time on the license that had been purchased. That was, that was deferred to the 41st day or killed last week, so that one is, is done. And then one that I know that Mr. McFarland, Mr. Kappemeyer and our planning and zoning director, Mr. Scott Anderson are working on and following fairly, fairly closely is House Bill 1223. And that, as I understand it, that would really make a, put, change the, the scheduling process for, for projects that are, that are going through the permitting process and currently, and Mr. Kappemeyer, feel free to jump in- And currently, and Mr. Kappmeier, feel free to jump in if I misstate anything here, is that if, if a, a project is going through the county zoning process, and that is, is referred for an appeal, that some of the other permitting action that goes along with that project, whether it's a DENR permit or other, other state level work that's required, those other elements of, of that permit process may, may move forward. This would change that, that if, if this is approved, if something is challenged on the, the county, county zoning process, that stops all permitting work until that, until that appeal is settled. And our, the county has some, some concerns that that could really pose some problems for our overall permitting process. And I, I understand that, that there is work and contacts being made on, on that bill, and that one is up for a committee hearing this, this morning. So we'll update you, and I'll have more definitive word next week when we, when we chat again.
It was originally defeated, it may come back, so that was the reason we reviewed it.
Very briefly, at the beginning of the session, Richard Beach, Julie Risti chatted with you about a, a bill that would allow her office to start electronically recording some, some documents. That is moving forward and appears to have little, if any, resistance. It's passed the Senate and it's been referred to House Judiciary. We talked about Senate Bill 111. And then a, just a, quickly, one of the other bills that came out as a result of association, one of the association's platform bills, an act to establish a county highway capital improvement fund and levy a capital improvement property tax for county highways, secondary roads, bridges, and culverts, that is scheduled for a hearing tomorrow in Senate local government. That would, those are the bills that I had identified, and if there are any other questions that, that I can answer on those or other bills, I'd be happy to do it.
Commissioner Benega?
Robert, the only one I had a question about was the one in reference to the state establishing a five million dollar appropriated reserve fund in the general fund for bridges. It's 1261. It says it got amended in the House, but it doesn't say what the amendment was. You can apply for seventy-five percent of funds up to a certain dollar amount to do, replace, repair, and renovate county bridges.
Yeah, and, and I can, I can check the text amendment on that very quickly and, and let you know, I, I don't have that in, in front of me at the moment.
Well, with a long list of county bridge requirements, I think we need to have some idea where that's going.
Obviously, tracking that, I, I made a, I guess, an assumption that maybe some of our smaller fellow counties might see the bulk of that, that money, but certainly, we're, we're watching that one. I'll, I'll get the, the text of that amendment and have that-
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions for Robert? Thank you. I guess that's it.
The next item is Minnehaha County Commissioner Liaison Reports.
Any liaison reports? I guess we can move on to new business?
We do have an item of new business. I believe there was a late-breaking litigation issue, so we're going to need to be briefed on that. And then, at the request of the state's attorney's office, I think we should come out of executive session. So there's a potential for, I would say, instead of adjourning into executive session, we should consider recessing into executive session for the purpose of getting briefed on litigation issue. And then, if necessary, coming back out for the purpose of taking official action.
Okay. Any other new business? Any old business? All right.
So I'm going to make a motion to go ahead and add to our executive session pending litigation that we need to be briefed, and with the idea that we would recess into executive session and then come out of executive session to go ahead and conclude today's meeting.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to recess the executive session for pending litigation to come back out with a possible, possible action. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes three to zero.